Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board hearing, Tuesday, August 5th. My name is Steve Webster, and I will introduce the members here, Von Dugan, Roger Murray, Nancy Wiley, Paul O'Brien, Kathy Barnard, and Julie Jacobs. We completed a site visit before coming here tonight, so I'll call to order here at the Great Hall this evening's meeting. We're going to start with a work session on the Shorefront Residential District, and Shawna's going to head that up.
Yep.
Do you want to point your ultimates? Oh, excuse me. I'd like to point Kathy and Julia's ultimates. Do you accept?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Planning Board. It's been a few months since I've been here. We started this process back in March, and I came to you in March where we kind of discussed the shoreline ordinance in general, some of the issues that we saw between the wording of the actual ordinance, the application, and then the way it was and had been historically was being applied. I then came back in April with some amendments, and we talked about those amendments. I've provided you a copy of those amendments. At the very top of the page, it says in blue, "Draft for 1525." So that was the draft of amendments that I made for that April meeting. At that April meeting, I identified a few problems in the ordinance. The first one had to do with, on page three, the shorefront lot improvements, which is 17567, and the issue of Sections B and C, which are on page four and five. B being the natural woodlands buffer and C being the standards applying to the 50-foot setback, and how and when those were applied to different applications, whether it was a raise and rebuild, whether it was an addition, whether or not it was maybe just an addition of a garage or something like that. The second problem that we IDed was under the natural woodlands buffer. If you'll remember, Section B on page four, they had under number three, so B3, there were renewal standards. The very last word of Section three is renewal standards. The above shall be satisfied with the following renewal standards. And when and how that applied, under what kind of construction that applied. And then the third problem that we identified was Section D on Lot 6, which was lot redevelopment. And the fact that we had a whole section entitled lot redevelopment, but that the only thing in that section were the pieces of submittal information that the applicant was to provide, and that redevelopment was no mention of it in any of the other sections. And so what we decided to do back in April was come up with a definition for lot redevelopment, because it wasn't, we weren't quite clear as we applied this ordinance what that meant, if somebody who was just putting an addition on was considered lot redevelopment, or if it included a complete raise and rebuild, and what happened if you were raising the building but building on a different portion of the lot, and what about accessory structures and things like that. And you'll see that in this draft, under lot redevelopment, I provided several scenarios that we discussed. We also talked about if you were in that category of lot redevelopment, what does that mean as it applies to the other sections of the ordinance that I had mentioned earlier, Section B and Section C, which included the natural buffer and the impervious surface area and the 50-foot setback. And then there were questions about that 50-foot setback and the tree grid requirement, which is something that mimics the state's Comprehensive Shoreline Act and the tree grid requirement, and whether or not that, the intent of that was that somebody could come in and cut the trees down and reestablish them. So those were the three fixes that we talked about. Those three fixes are shown in this final draft, which at the top is cited as 8525. And so for, and I'm going to go backward here, because that's how we kind of worked through the ordinance last time. What I did on pages six and seven is define lot redevelopment for you. So lot redevelopment does not include boat houses, because you'll see that boat houses are in a whole separate section and have a whole separate set of standards associated with them, including raising and rebuilding. So it does not include boat houses, but it does include any amount of raise and rebuild on the lot, the primary residential structure. That wording was the exact wording you wanted me to use, primary residential structure. And that all existing structures on the lot may be completely demolished with none of the footprints preserved, meaning that people could demolish a garage and rebuild it someplace else, demolish their house and rebuild it someplace else, demolish a guest cottage and rebuild it somehow somewhere else. However, the size of the footprint could not increase, nor the impervious surface. And so if that was the case, you would qualify for lot redevelopment. Vertical expansion, so someone that wanted to go up only over existing footprint, so it does not increase impervious area as long as it meets all setbacks and buffers, is defined as lot redevelopment. So if somebody was going up, that would be considered lot redevelopment. And then raising and rebuilding of all, any of these accessory structures, as again, same size, but could change location also included, would be included in the definition of lot redevelopment. And then on page seven, we did discuss the fact that we wanted plans to be submitted showing the pre-construction and the post-construction footprints, including square footage and area, dimensions and area, so that we could, we could use that in our review of the permit. Now that we've got lot redevelopment defined, going back to, back a page on page five, that 50-foot standard, the 50-foot setback, the standards that apply to the 50-foot setback area, the only change that we made in there are, again, the yellow highlighting. So the existing waterfront buffer may be maintained unless the project results in 20% impervious surface coverage, which we, which relates to one of the earlier sections, in which case the buffer must be replanted to meet the point system described below. And that's important, because on page four, again, working backward, this is only going to apply to new construction and lots where impervious coverage is increasing, and lot redevelopment with existing non-conforming or conforming primary structures are exempt. So that language was not in this before. So now we've defined redevelopment, and we're saying, okay, you are exempt, sorry, you are exempt from Section B on page four, which is the natural woodlands buffer, and page five, the standards that apply to the 50-foot setback. It only comes into case if you result in more than 20% impervious coverage. That language existed before, with more than 20% impervious coverage. I think those are basically the major changes. The only other change that was made between April and August is on page three, where, again, we redefine that grid segment and saying that if any of the grids, and this is the tree points, grid segments, within the waterfront buffer in the pre-development state does not meet the required 25 tree score, then it has to be planted with additional vegetation. And this is in Section C, so it's only for projects, the very first sentence, that will result in more than 20% impervious surface coverage. So, so as a whole, we've made several changes, including defining the lot redevelopment and providing the exemptions. For the final draft, the one that's yellow highlighted, that if this, if the board, this is what the board wants to move forward on, our next step would be to redesign the application, because right now the application is still, still the same application that was used since 2012, and so it hasn't taken into account any of the revisions, including the revisions that were done in 2024. And so we would redesign that and then start applying the application as amended.
Section D is drafted...
What page?
On page six. Are you suggesting that you could tear down an existing non-conforming structure within the 50-foot setback and move it anywhere else on the lot, including within the 50-foot?
That's a good, that is a good point.
I think it's generally been...
It usually is as the footprint is preserved.
Yeah. You can build in the footprint. Once you get back 50 feet, you can build, but you cannot encroach elsewhere into the 50 feet.
Yep. That's an excellent point. Yep.
Yep. My other thought is that we are, let's see what it's called, pre-existing, what you just defined. Lot redevelopment, I think our intention was that as long as you can demonstrate that you're improving some feature, then you can state what that is. Let's say it's a decrease in pervious area, or an increase of plantings, or some kind of rain guarding, or some stormwater control measures, that that would be allowed. You had to just demonstrate what that difference and improvement over the prior standard and situation was.
So you just had to put in a few more plantings, and then you would be allowed all the exemptions to...
That's the way we had done it. A few more plantings, and you'd have to bring the property level, let's say you were at 40% coverage, down to, let's say, 30%, where we want you, and show that you're doing that. Then, you know, you kind of get a check, you have to list what the things are that you're doing that make it better.
So what we do say earlier, so on page three, under A, so this is standards that apply throughout the whole 250 area. Under C, say, so for a project that will result in more than 20% impervious coverage, you're required to do a stormwater management plan, and you're required to put in, to infiltrate increase, the increase in stormwater. So you're required to do a BMP. And additionally, if any grid segment in the pre-development state does not meet the required 25% tree score, it has to be planted with additional vegetation.
That's not my understanding.
That, so that's the existing language?
For not pre-developed sites. So if you are developing a site...
I see what you're saying. Okay.
So pre-development, I believe the board discussed anything that you do that makes it better would be approvable or good.
Okay.
We want to encourage people to make it better than it is.
Okay.
We don't want, if you have a small lot, it becomes, and there are buffers everywhere and setbacks.
Yes.
It's impossible to bring it to the new standard. We want us, we, I don't know if, who was here, but our impression was, we wanted to make sure that you proved you were making it better. Better according to, let's say, natural buffer, distance from the setback line, impervious area, because, because there are three, there are three or four different levels of criteria.
Yep.
And they aren't all the same, which is confusing. But I'd like to hear what the board members think of that, because I remember thinking making it better was to be encouraged.
That was my impression of how it was being interpreted.
I agree.
I do, I do remember, I have notes from April talking about the Wolfboro waters input and notes that, that basically that I knew, you guys wanted, that if anyone, yeah, I guess, I guess what you're saying is true. Okay. So if anyone increases at all the impervious surface, that is not, that is not what you're talking about. They have to stay exactly the same?
Then they meet the criteria, unless, but if they're decreasing, we want to encourage that.
Okay. Okay. I see what you're saying.
That's what I thought we decided.
Okay. So I think probably what we would do is, we would further define that lot redevelopment to include exactly that. And so it would be...
Yeah, it was lacking definition, for sure.
Yep. Okay.
And make clear that you can't move it around on the lot and clear...
Within the 50.
Within the 50.
Yep.
Well, you can move it as long as it's no closer.
Right. As long as it's more nonconforming.
And in the footprint, more nonconforming.
Yeah.
Back.
Yep.
You can, side to side.
Yep.
But you've got the expansion limitation.
Right.
Yeah.
We wanted...
And so I just want to make sure, and this situation actually came up today, and I'm not, I'm not going to throw anyone under the bus here, but we had an application that changed the coverage from 34.1 to 33.5 by removing nine square feet. So even something like that, where it was not even a full percentage of a change, or it could be like one tree, as long as it was something.
We thought it was better.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Because I do know, looking at the older ordinances, that at one point there was a threshold of it must be at least 1% of...
I don't remember a percentage.
So, okay.
We can talk about that.
I think at one point Wolfboro Waters may have been looking for some figure like that.
Yeah.
Some minimum.
Okay.
And I think...
We decided not to go that route.
A prior town planner made that more difficult to discuss.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. I'll take another stab at it, and I apologize for misunderstanding.
So another thing that we, I thought as a board, were concerned about was bringing this back to the voters. I thought, maybe we thought we were going to just make the checklist more applicable to the current standard. We were going to work on the checklist and not the...
I have a concern about that, particularly given what the legislature has done, and we're going to have a whole mess we've got to deal with. And to try and get this to make sense to the voters when we're dealing with state mandates may not be the most opportune moment.
Yeah. I mean, we're in a, we are in a bit of a tough position, because the way that the ordinance is written right now, with lot redevelopment not only not being defined, but not being referred to in any of the requirement sections, the requirements right now apply to a lot more than I think you intended. And I can tell you, when I started interpreting it that way, every engineer and surveyor showed up at my door saying, "What the heck are you doing?" And I said, "I'm applying the ordinance. I'm, I don't know how it's ever been applied before, right? This is how it's written." So, you know, if that ever were to go to court, the judge is going to look at how it's written, not, not how we've applied it over the past 10 years.
Well, unfortunately, the lot redevelopment was a broad brush.
Yeah.
And so if you just look at that section without the new definitions, it, a narrative letter is what you need, and you need to convince us that it's better in some way.
And I, I don't disagree with you. So if you look at the, the older version, the April version, that still has the cross-out language in there, and you can see that it does say, "Any property owner wishes to redevelop has to submit a narrative letter," and a few other things at that point, a plan prepared by an engineer, the profiles of existing structures. So there's all this submittal information, but then, once it was submitted, there was no other application, it was never referred to under any other section. So it, it didn't matter whether or not you were defined as redevelopment or not, because there was no exemptions for redevelopment anywhere else, where we've added those in now.
Like what exemptions would go in there?
Well, so now we're saying, if you are lot redevelopment, you do not have to, so on, and I apologize to jump between the two versions. On page four of the yellow highlighted version, we have said, under B, that section applies only to new construction and lots where impervious coverage is increasing. Lot redevelopment are exempt from this section. Otherwise, that person is subject to natural woodlands, woodlands buffer standards and under, sorry, let me find the right section, under three, for lots that do not comply with the area requirements of the natural woodlands buffer, and, and, yep, blah de blah above, they shall be satisfied using the following renewal standards. That very clearly says, if any lot does not meet the standards, you have to create natural woodlands buffer area to meet those standards.
Except when you read on and you're talking about lot redevelopment.
And where, but where does, it does not say lot redevelopment.
Not in that section, no. The lot redevelopment is kind of a blanket statement later on.
It also says in the second sentence of B, if the impervious coverage is not increased.
I'm sorry, of B? B, what page, Roger?
Page four.
The what?
The heading B.
That's new. The yellow highlighting is new.
Yellow is new.
Oh, okay.
That didn't exist before.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, I agree, that's the way we have, what the new yellow is in this case.
Yep.
I agree, that is the way we have been interpreting it. But we thought it was covered in lot redevelopment, but it wasn't clear enough.
Right.
Yeah. So I think that adds clarification, but some of the other stuff is not accurate, or not what we intended.
Yes. Lot redevelopment needs to be rewritten, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I think that, that is why there's a little bit of danger in moving forward with, with not adopting this, because it doesn't, the language doesn't state what you guys want, right?
It doesn't specifically deny it either. It's, it's vague unless you interpret it the way we intended it, which was you get to lot redevelopment and it's sort of a clean slate, do better, and explain to us why, I think, is what the blanket thought was.
You can't, can't just adopt new words midstream. We kind of have to stick with what we have until we vote again.
Agreed. Agreed.
But something we could do today is bring all the applications up to date, which we'd already talked about at meetings ago, because there's many that are not up to date, come to find out.
Yeah. I mean, I, I...
Now we have staff.
Well, yeah. I mean, I, I, I need to know kind of how we're moving forward with the language before we could do the application. I think that's what I've struggled with, is that without having...
The application until next spring needs to match what we have now.
I don't think you guys want that, because again, that means that all these lots are subject to those renewal standards, and that means a lot of people are planting a lot of extra area that when we do adopt the new language, they're, they're no longer subject to. It's a little bit of a quandary. And maybe it's, maybe it's the type of situation where we get to the final draft, and maybe you have a, a meeting with legal counsel and ask legal counsel what the best way to move forward is on this.
Well, it makes sense to take a stab at updating the application so that it coincides, so kind of the numbers match the words, kind of.
Yeah. We can take, we can do that. We can do that. And I think too, I mean, if the only thing really that's on the table is the definition of the lot redevelopment, and everything else, it sounds like, is where we want to be with this ordinance, then yes, I think we're at a state now where we understand exactly what needs to go in that new application. Yeah.
The two would complement each other.
Yep. Yep. And then, and then really it's, it's, you know, a matter of brand-new staff with no background and no history being able to apply it, right? So that's the most important part, so.
I, I do, just regarding page seven, the plan prepared by and stamped by a professional engineer or surveyor, I remember the conversations we were having when we first changed the ordinance, and we thought unless you were over 20%, you did not need a professional engineer to stamp the plan, to do a...
Yes, because it was a burden, it was too expensive.
Whatever that's called.
Yep. Actually, that is true.
Water.
Yep.
Management.
Right. That is very true. So the, the old language was that only the stamp was needed if you were over 20%. It does say a plan prepared by a professional engineer or surveyor to prove lot redevelopment, though, but not necessarily...
Might as well stamp it. But, you know, if somebody's got to survey it and show existing and proposed, and you're redeveloping, I don't, I mean, I think you pretty much always have an engineer involved.
It's helpful. It is, it is much less staff time if the engineer is involved.
Yeah. Yeah. There may be there's some level, though, of change criteria, because you hate to have somebody putting a shed on or moving a garage around, having to pay a lot of money for a professional engineer. So...
Yeah. And I should say, we typically do kind of make administrative decisions, that if it's something as simple as a brand-new shed, we do let them just sketch it on.
Yeah.
Typically, we give them a copy of the existing shoreline plan for house and have them sketch it on to scale, check that, so.
If there was one.
Yeah. If there was one, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it almost seems like our ordinance just needs to go to the new planner with notes on what we intended, and then we have to discuss whether or not we need to change the ordinance or how we proceed from here.
Yeah. And I think that's absolutely the intent. My time here is short.
Yeah.
You probably will not see me again at a planning board meeting, so yes, that is absolutely the intent. The intent was for me to finish up and get a final, final draft tonight and get it to Bill. It'll be kind of a handoff so that the lot redevelopment can once again be redrafted and bring it back to you. Yep.
But I have a question, since this involves so much of Wolfboro Waters and the Conservation Commission as well, does it have to go back through those two committees before it goes on?
I think Wolfboro Waters brought this up to us, and I think it should go back to them, and if the Conservation Commission has any input, that would certainly be useful.
And I believe it was Wentworth Association, too. Julie Brown?
Yeah.
You know, and right now, things are just being held up because of this interpretation problem. And so I think, no, they're not...
No. They're not being held up. They're being held up because we don't have, did not have the staff to keep up with the demand.
Yeah.
You know, I was, I'm eight hours a week doing zoning board and planning board and shoreline. So, shoreline... So shoreline permits, unfortunately, because state statutes gave me timelines for planning board and zoning board, we're always backburnered. So that's why they fell so far behind. But we have full staff now, and so everything's moving quite along. I mean, even in the last... A little bit more, knowing that we could put off some stuff because Bill was coming.
Or here, yeah. I think once you do the handoff and Bill gets a look at it and maybe send a draft around to the other groups
Absolutely.
for their input.
Yep. Yeah, in fact, Bill will probably be the one doing that, so, yeah.
Then you can watch over us in session, make sure that we're following your footsteps. Anything else? Thank you, Sean.
All right, I appreciate your input once again, yeah.
Yeah, and thank you for helping us out all this time while we were waiting.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why we're here, so I was happy to do it.
All right, next on the agenda was a public hearing for Atwell on Elm. We received a request for a continuance to September 16, 2025. Need a motion to... Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Charles Blanchett and Karen Blanchett. "Special use permit, relocate and expand driveway within wetlands buffer to access upland area for the construction of a single-family home. Trotting Track Road, tax map number 146005005, case number 2025-22. Formal submission and public hearing." Do we have someone to represent tonight? Please introduce yourself and carry on.
I think it's on the side.
On the side.
You hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Tom Barney, Barney Engineering. I'm here with Charlie and Karen Blanchett, who own this property now. Josh Tebow, he's a civil engineer. So from the site lock, you can see the property and what it is. And I'll read down through the story here. So this is a 3.35 acre property that was heavily wooded prior to logging and driveway construction by a previous owner. It has rocky land and a wetland ecosystem. Hydrological flow curves across the lot from the back property line to Trotting Track Road. The wetland areas are wooded with some very fully drained soil, surface water, and mostly fully drained soil. The attached wetland delineation report by North Country Soil Services this April 15, 2025, describes the vegetation and the soil characteristics of the wetland areas. The function of the wetlands is for ecological integrity, flood storage, groundwater drainage, nutrient removal, wildlife habitat, as described in the Army Corps of Engineers Highway Methodology Work Report. An old vernal pools are on site. The special use permit plan for Charles and Karen provides for restoration of the buffer zone impacts. A portion of the driveway is to be moved away from the wetland. The rocks, stumps, and brush piles are to be removed. The disturbed area to be restored by revegetating the natural growth. Erosion-controlled stormwater measures are to be installed. So on this plan here, the blue areas...
Can I speak into the mic, please?
You can take it right out of the holder for Mike.
So the blue areas is the wetland areas. There's two like streams of wetland from top to the bottom as the land slopes this way down to the road. And the reddish areas is the buffer zone, which is 25 feet wide, that was designated on the Southern Division Plan in 2005, and that's the buffer zone. It was supposed to be protected. And I also showed the driveway. So a driveway was constructed. There were two operations. One was a logging operation that came in not from the road here, but from this budding property and logged it. And afterwards, I believe, somebody came in and built a driveway. And that driveway goes through the buffer zone in certain places here. So the wetlands were mapped out by a wetland scientist and a soil scientist and gave us a report. And those are very poorly drained wetlands, which tell us what the setback is for building from those setbacks. So on this plan, I'm showing the trees, which is, this is the woods in green. Open areas where the proposed house site is. And then the driveway here, I'm calling out for some of this driveway gravel to be removed here with the road driveway moved over to this location for better site visibility. It's dangerous. By moving this road 10 feet, it makes a lot of difference. It goes from a blind driveway into one that's 100% safe. That's better for being more aligned with the buffer situation. We're away from that wetland there. We're better aligned with that. So that area is to be restored, and I call out the area here, 1,070 square feet. And then further up here is to remove these rocks and stumps here and restore that with... Put the natural soil back and let it grow, natural growth. And up here, on this section here, is to remove fill. Some fill got bulldozed during the road driveway construction into the buffer zone. I'm calling out that that be removed and then revegetated. That's 515 square feet there. It's a brush pile to be removed here, stump pile and rocks. So that's what we're asking for. You require a special permit to go through the buffer zone. And there was no permit when this work was done. Now we're here asking after the fact. So can I answer any questions, I believe?
Any questions from the board?
Well, I'm curious about the word on the plan, "revegetate area," and your comment was restored. What is going to happen?
Well, the revegetation would be taken the natural soil, forest soil. I call it humus. That's the natural ground. When you bulldoze the land, you remove the stumps and pile up. I call it loam or forest layer. I call it humus because that's what the State Highway Department calls it years ago. And put that humus, which is the natural forest layer back on the ground, and let it grow naturally.
So put that on top of the existing fill and not remove the fill?
No, the fill here gets removed.
I meant down by the road.
Okay, the gravel gets removed. That would be reused when you relocate that. The gravel is valuable, and we don't want it there. We want to remove that and put the humus, topsoil there and then let natural vegetation take over.
So no intention to remove the fill within the buffer?
The buffer zone has the natural contours of it. There's no need to remove fill. It's to remove some of that gravel and then put the forest layer humus back in and let it grow.
So once you remove the driveway, then you'll reestablish that front corner?
Yeah.
Where we pulled in.
We reestablished the buffer zone. Is the... I think it was recycled asphalt. Is that going to remain? Well, that was brought up. I was interested in that. That makes sense to me. It's right over the hall. That could be a goal. Add a condition for that, or we could do that.
And that recycled asphalt is roughly 15 feet from the... From Trotting Track in 15, 20 feet in, right? It's not going up the...
Well, it's over here, right in the middle, I believe.
Over the large culvert that was halfway up the driveway.
Oh, so that large culvert, okay. So you have no... You'd be okay on a condition saying, "Get that out of there"?
So the relocated driveway would be a new gravel driveway realigned?
So there's no recycled blacktop in that gravel area that's going into the...
There's a load of that right around that culvert. That's all there is.
That's all there is, okay.
The rest of it is... There is nice gravel here. This is just natural ground that's been stripped.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
Do you anticipate blasting ledge for the new driveway? I don't think so at all. I think they could get around that rock that's here and then hammer it.
If you did hit ledge, would the conformance of the standards for New Hampshire Stormwater Manual control that, that practice? How you would handle it?
I don't know. That's in the...
Yeah, it's noted in your notes here that the erosion and sediment controls during construction. So if you did have to do the blasting, you'd have to follow those rules. Was a staff note about, given the driveway is elevating, removing all the boulders may cause the driveway to erode. But as we saw when we walked it today, I think that the rock placement there, where it is supporting the structure of the driveway, if you will, those would remain so that you're not promoting erosion, so.
Yeah, those could be left in place and pull the road there.
I think that's what they're talking about here.
There was also mention of erosion around the culvert, flipped on both ends. Will that be addressed somehow? I mean, erosions around the yellow end of that?
They're talking about the upstream end, yeah.
And you also looked like maybe some erosion on the downstream end of that culvert. I could add that to the plan. The culvert was just thrown in there. It has no permit. There's no plans for that. But I could address that.
Yes, clean it up, I think was what they're saying.
Is the culvert... Is the culvert large enough? Yes. Is it just unpermitted?
Looked like an 18-inch plastic culvert to me.
Forget there's a 12 going across the street.
Right. It probably could be switched around. So the staff has recommended that the application is complete and ready for acceptance, given the discussion of these bullet items that we just discussed.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have a accepted application. So now I'll open the floor for public comment.
Hi, Lenore Clark, Conservation Commission. I just wanted to double-check with... I noticed the chair is absent tonight, so I just wanted to make sure that the board got the commission's memo about this application.
Yes, we did.
Okay. When you say "staff," I'm not staff, so I didn't know if you were referring to me or referring to someone.
Yes, we have to unpack us very good.
We got a synopsis of the entire memo.
We got a little too cute with the pictures, and there was a... You know, that always causes some formatting problems. But if you have any questions on here, from the commission side of things, I'm here and I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lenore.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Charles Blanchett. My wife Karen Blanchett is over here. We are the owners of that property. And first, I'd like to thank all the members of the planning board that showed up. It was surprising. There was a lot of people there. Also, the selectmen showing up. Just want to let you know that we hired Varney because we know they'll do a good job. And they were very thorough. And when we saw that property, obviously, we fell in love with it. But one thing we wanted to make sure is everything's done right. And we didn't feel things were done right. And the fact that we're here tonight, we want to assure you that this will be done right, and we'll feel pretty good about it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for showing up today. We really do appreciate it. Thanks for that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion for approval?
Do you want to talk about the recommended conditions of approval? I have one question, and it would be helpful, I think, if the plan stated who prepared it. I know we've got a designer. We've got a wetland scientist. But it doesn't say who actually prepared the plan, although I think I know who it was.
My engineering is here. Original Southern Division.
Speak into the mic, please.
Oops.
Yeah, I have my engineer's stamp and my wetland scientist's stamp, but the original Southern Division had a soil scientist. Need to speak into the mic? Or you can feel free. So Peter Kupadoc was a soil scientist that stamped the plan in 2005. So it was mapped out that way with a soil scientist. And now Greg Howard is the wetland scientist that did the wetland delineation. And he has a report that's in the file. But I've prepared the plan to make sense out of this whole thing and with all the clear cutting and everything else. And especially from that application, special use application, that's... So could you just put on it was prepared by Varney Engineering LLC? Yeah. I can do that. I can make a note for that. Just under the title block?
Roger, down at the bottom right, it does say that.
No.
Varney Engineering, right at the bottom on the right.
It says... It doesn't say who prepared the plan. It has that and it's got the seals, but it doesn't say who prepared it.
Look, also, Thomas Varney is a designer.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's just under the signature block, prepared by, yeah, just standard practice. So, the planning board may wish to consider final action on this application, subject to the conditions noted below. The following plan is amended to the date of approval is hereby incorporated into this approval. Plan 1, Sheet 1, Special Use Land Permit, land of Charles Blanchett, tax map 146, Lot 5-5, Trotting Track Road, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, prepared by Peter Cooperdock.
Nope.
Nope.
Going to be Thomas Varney.
Thomas Varney?
Engineering. Varney Engineering.
Thomas Varney, and that will be added to the, under the title block as well in the plan. The plan specify the placement of humus, forest organic matter over some of the disturbed areas, which is to be further covered with leaves and forest duff. All this material must be sourced on-site without further impacts. This is unusual method. If this method fails to regenerate growth by the time of the certificate of occupancy, town shall require the applicant to restore the area using a different method, such as seed mix. Per the recommendation of the Conservation Commission, the applicant shall revise the plan to depict any ledge outcroppings along the new proposed driveway location, and shall add a note on the plan to reflect how such will be addressed during construction. If any additional trees or shrubs are to be installed, they should be specified to be native to New Hampshire, or at least not listed on the Department of Agriculture markets and food as invasive. The applicant shall comply with the pre-construction siltation and erosion control measures, construction sequence as shown on the plan, as well as any further erosion control required by the board or staff. Inspection by the town shall be required of siltation devices prior to construction. Final drawings, each individual sheet in every set of drawings must include a certified wetland scientist's stamp and the LLC's stamp. Final version of the narrative letter shall include certified wetland scientist's stamp. The application shall submit the following: two sets of 17 by 22 black line final approved plans, one set of 11 by 17 final approved plan drawings, one electronic version in a PDF format. The applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all recording fees. All of the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant, any requirements and any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation in this notice herein shall generally be determining. The application shall be required to monument the edge of wetlands in compliance with 175 9.1 Wetlands Boundary Monumentation. This includes, wetlands shall be delineated by State of New Hampshire Certified Wetland Scientists. Markers should be placed 50 feet plus or minus intervals along the total wetland boundary following its general contour. Cales should be taken to ensure that markers are placed with the appropriate spacing at points closest to any proposed or existing structure located on the property. Costs shall be borne by the applicant slash developer or their successors and interests. The applicant shall be responsible for submitting a letter of certification or posting to the code enforcement office prior to the issuance of any building permit. This special use permit is valid for a period of one year from the date of issue for zoning section 175-186.C. Following appeals language shall be added to the notice of decision pursuant to RSA An aggravated party may appeal this decision to the Carroll County Court within 30 days of the date of the board voted to approve or disapprove the application, or to the ZBA pursuant to RSA 676-53. With 30 days, within 30 days of the date the board has made its decision.
One other?
No, he's reading the conditions.
Is that a motion you just made?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to add one other thing, and that is that the boulders that are supporting the driveway shall remain in place.
I agree.
And that the addition of "prepared by" is noted on the plan?
Yes.
One other, if I could, that the ground-up blacktop be removed?
Yep.
Those three.
The recycled asphalt shall be removed over the culvert area, on the upper culvert in the driveway.
And there was also discussion about adding the culvert to the plan, is that still the wish of the board?
No, the culvert's on the plan.
Oh, it's already on?
Yep. So, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Congratulations.
And I'd like to add the finding of fact that the relocated driveway has less impact on the buffer to the wetlands.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Okay. Next on the agenda is other business. Erin Mashad, Site Plan Review, Change of Use. The applicant is seeking a change of use for the property located at 83 Center Street, formerly the office of the Laker publication, to a bakery and carryout for baked good and ready-made sandwiches, soups, and salads. The application is seeking Site Plan Review approval under the permitted use of Restaurant Karma Carryout. Do we have someone present to speak to this?
Good evening.
Please introduce yourself, get nice and close to that mic so that we can hear you. You can take it out of the holder if you want.
Is that better?
Yes, excellent.
Excellent.
If I hold it, I'll sing with it, so I'm going to leave it in here. My name's Sarah Morgan, this is my partner, Erin Mishu. He has signed a purchase and sales agreement for 83 Center. You read the beginning part of this, so I don't have to go over that. We are not proposing any changes to the exterior of the building, lighting or parking. There's currently an enclosed structure in the back that will house our trash removal, and they will, it'll be picked up two to three times a week. There are currently eight parking spots on the site, and there are two ADA parking spaces. Due to the proximity of the property to the Smith River, we are not proposing the use of salt or sand in the parking lot. There are two pre-designated storage places for snow, and they've previously been approved already by the Technical Review Committee with a minor site plan process. Our hours of operation are going to be Monday through Saturday from 7 to 2. The property is serviced by Town Water and Sewer. We are not adding any commercial dishwashing equipment, as it will damage the integrity of our baking equipment. We will have a three-bay sink, that includes all necessary sanitation, though, inside. We do have an independent company coming in to design the kitchen plans, independent restaurants apply. Once we receive that, we'll forward that along to the Planning Department to include in our application submittal. What we're looking for this evening, really, is, first of all, if the board could confirm that the proposed change of use is permitted in what we've asked for. Two, the parking spaces out back are currently not striped, and if that would be required for approval. There's no signage for the ADA parking spaces, so would that be required for approval? And is there any information that we could give you that we haven't provided already?
Has staff reviewed this application yet, Leah?
Shannon and I sat down with the applicants to review their proposal, and it was determined that the best permitted, the proposal fell under the Restaurant Carryout.
It was Restaurant Carryout, yeah.
It was the best suited permitted use that it would fall under. They're not going to be sitting, there's not going to be tables that they're sitting at, even though it is under Restaurant. They, everything's going to be basically come in, purchase, and leave. Everything's going to be disposable, it is on Town Water Sewer, but they're not going to be really, because of the commercial dishwashing.
Yeah, we won't be expanding the water usage.
Yep. They are going to be inquiring with the State Shoreland Bureau whether or not a shoreline permit is required, because the changes are interior, they just want to make sure that there's not a permit required because of the parking or whatever.
But it was already, what is the change?
It's just interior, it's a change of use, basically, a change of use.
From a business to a business, that's why I'm...
Well, office to Restaurant Carryout, right? Because the Laker was office, office.
Mr. Chairman.
Both permitted, they're both right.
They had distribution out of there also.
Yep, yep. But the TRC process doesn't have minor site plan review anymore.
Chairman.
Doesn't have that minor site plan review process anymore, so site plan review now has to go to the planning board, the full, just like the Zimmerman gazebo, that the board found that it, right? So, it has to come before the planning board, under site plan review, so...
But you're saying if another office wanted to go in there, they'd just move in?
Mr. Chairman.
This is what I'm confused with, because it's still within...
I'm not sure, because wouldn't that be considered an abandonment, because it's been over a year?
While you have a question?
Yeah, I'm kind of piling on with Julie here. The zone has limited retail activity. The only, you know, my memory from being on this board is the only time there's a lapsing is when they were, someone was given a special permit or special use for a non-conforming business in the zone. The business that left, and the businesses coming are conforming to the zone. The only question I've had, I'd have for the rest of us here, is do we need to give them advice as to whether they ought to stripe the parking lot and put up some ADA spaces? But I'm not, I'm not getting the sense here that this is a, anything other than business going on a business, permitted already in the zone.
And actually, remember across the street, there was Sub Shop?
Well, that may be true, but it's business going on business in the zone. The zone has been set up, and Kathy and I were musing, and I think I was on the planning board when we, when we did this one, so I was asking the question, why is it here in the first place, other than maybe getting some free advice, this is, you might want to paint the parking lot?
This is a change of the type of business, though?
But it's still a business, it's permitted in the zone.
But businesses are, the approval of a business is specific to that type of business? I mean, you can't have a candy store and decide you're going to put in a supermarket and have nothing, not come through site review.
Yeah, but this is in a candy store and a supermarket, this is limited retail activity and mixed commercial and residential uses.
Well, it meets the definite, it's been determined to be a Restaurant Carryout, I believe it meets the definition of that as set forth in the zoning ordinance. And a restaurant has different requirements than an office or a retail space.
My only concern is the two ADA spaces, that they probably should be marked.
Yep.
Because of different ADA laws, and there is a change happening, so maybe striping in.
I wanted to striping, since I'm familiar with that parking lot, you may want to wait until after the first winter to decide how to stripe it.
Thank you.
I think if the parking spaces could be relocated, so it's not right up against Smith River, that would be positive, and you might want to do a parking calculation, because I think you may have more spaces than you actually need, in terms of the zoning ordinance, whether there'd be sufficient traffic, that you'd like to have those, maybe another question?
I think they're within the 500 feet of the public parking lot. Oh, that's true. It's usually empty, because there's no crosswalk.
Is the building ADA accessible now?
The building is ADA accessible, yes.
So, it makes sense to put the spots in and put the signage up?
Yep.
I would think that this could be handled at the building department level, wouldn't you think?
I would not.
I do.
They're going to have to do complete inspections with fire.
Yeah, building and fire will have to go through before they open, you know?
And the state, because it's food.
Right.
I think it needs to go through site review. If this was being, an office being turned into a 30-seat restaurant, are you going to say, oh yeah, it's okay, it's just another business? I would hope not.
But you're giving examples that aren't similar.
Well, a carryout restaurant is not similar, necessarily similar to an office.
Well, as long as the parking requirement is the same.
No.
There seems to be no parking requirements now, because it's that bit within 500 feet of, you know, you find a space.
They would have to come in for the planning board to, with a management, parking manager plan, which really would not make sense, since I think they do meet the parking requirements.
So, what would, what would the parking requirements be then, for us?
Well, one, a carryout restaurant bases it on counter length, and it might be five spaces, but I didn't, I didn't have sufficient information, but I looked at it and seemed to me eight spaces was more than the zoning ordinance required.
Put in the ordinance.
Were there any prior approvals or plans approved? Is there anything in the file on this property?
There was, there was a karate studio that was approved through the special TRC committee through the minor site plan.
Through a minor site plan? So, is there any paperwork that shows the layout of the parking room?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's not it, that's her layout.
Is there required parking now? Is there required parking, or is it just that free-for-all for the 500 feet within the parking area, the parking spaces?
You, that is an alternate parking arrangement, which is a separate procedure you need to go through with the planning board, and generally, and under, I think you cannot eliminate parking spaces, it already exists, if, unless you exceed the minimum requirement.
Well, again, the good news is they're within, within walking distance of a municipal lot.
But then they would have to come in with a, an arrangement under the site review regulations to use an alternate parking arrangement, and they don't need to do that, so why would they bother?
I was just responding to your question about, or your answer about parking, that's all.
If I may, one of the major issues between office and this is the trip generation, so the car that comes in to pick up food is there for five or 10 minutes, the car that comes into the office sits there for a minimum of 15 to several hours. So, trip generation, how many times cars cross the driveway is the big difference between those two uses. And then pedestrian activity and everything else, you know, you can't imagine what type of office would have a lot of pedestrian activity, but that would be more frequent here. So, you look at the differences between the two uses, and then you take a look at the site plan as it relates to how do we accommodate those differences for this new use? And if they have takeout, there's going to be a higher trip generation, which is a good thing, it's more customers, but it's not an office, unless it's a drive-through bank, you know?
The good news is, it's on the same side of the street as the parking lot that's empty.
Right. So, I mean, but, you know, somebody coming in will be 15, 20 minutes in your site, and then they turn around as they pick up their food, so that'll be crossing the driveway. So, spaces proxemic to the building that they can get in and out is a key to their business, because it's unlikely they'll park 400 feet away to do a 15-minute pickup. So, they want to have quick spaces at the proximity of the building, and it may be longer if they can't find spaces there. may be longer if they can't find spaces there. And they have two ADA spaces adjacent to the building, I think you have there. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you want to park them so they're sticking out into the lane like that.
No, it'd probably, it would be closer to the building, probably, one and two, yeah.
Just, just be careful about things like the people walking from the back of the parking lot around the front. You don't want them to walk further.
Right.
And how do you designate a lane for pedestrians so that the person coming from the bottom of your page, I don't know where the North Avenue is, up Route 109, over the Smith River and turning in quickly is going to be, have lack of visibility in the building. So pedestrians coming around your building need to have some sort of safe passage from the back of your parking lot. I mean, if your parking was up front, it's a direct connection to the building. But since they're up back, you want to make sure that they're not coming around the corner as the car is coming around the corner, you know, with a view obstruction of the building. So those are a few of the site plan issues.
So would you recommend, Bill, that they, they come back and visit with the staff and refine this plan?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can work with them. That's not a problem. We want to make sure that everybody's safe and their business is effective. And, you know, are you thinking about picking tables out back? Are you giving the river and everything else, or?
We haven't even gotten that far.
All right, all right.
What's your timetable? What's your timetable on this?
Well, the closing date is, what, September? Yeah. So the closing date is in September, so hopefully being able to open in the fall.
So ribbon cutting in the fall, you need to be in the building by when, which would mean the, a building permit then worked, then the opening, when do you think you'd need the building permit by to get to the ribbon cutting timeline? I mean, if you're in the fall, October-ish?
Yeah, October.
All right. And the only other thing, when you have sites like this and you have takeout, watch out for providing enough trash receptacles. You know, you're at the edge of the woods. People might just toss stuff out in your back park and, you know, have that in the back. But we can work with them rather than take up your time. Sorry.
That's, that's a good suggestion.
Can I go on?
But I think what you're getting is the board does believe that it's a permitted use of right. Question about whether ideally the parking spaces would be striped. The handicap, I think the sentiment was, should be striped. And...
That's it?
Any other suggestions, discussion?
You can always ask the previous owner how it was striped for the workers in the back. He was there for quite a few years.
Yep. All right.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sounds like a viable business.
Yeah. You guys will have to come and, come and eat.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You.
Okay, next is a discussion on the work program.
Right now.
Zoning map update. Zoning map has not been updated since 2019 by White Mountain Engineering Horizon.
There you go.
Engineering. We've got vending boot trucks on the list, adding definitions, permitted use, multi-family table from December 24, address legislative bills that passed that were effective July 1st, shorefront residential ordinance, district ordinance, the master plan implementation, short-term rental ordinance, grandfathered short-term rentals, clarify permitting process, road construction regulations, ridge line setback, Peter Goodwin to submit information, removal of front yard streets setback recommended by ZBA, 175-73 and 175-83 water and sewer hookup, remove special exception requirement.
There is no special exception requirement.
Now, there is one. Steve Randall has expressed a desire to remove the language in the ordinance that requires a special exception and replace it with language that allows a decision to be made at the discretion of the Public Works Director and/or in compliance with state requirements.
Yeah, I would agree with the second part of that, but there should be some standards on it.
Add standards.
The back, the...
It's on the back, back side.
Did the memo make it down?
It did, yeah. Back of the meeting memo. There was a meeting memo that got passed around.
Did it make it down?
Yep.
So it's just a single page?
I'm going to, I'm going to have to take a minute here to apologize to the board. It landed in front of me, and I did not pass it to the students to my left.
One demerit.
So, so I owe everybody a free cup of coffee at the new takeout. My apologies. I, I just thought you were, it was, never mind.
Not all about you.
So...
We thought you were winging it over there, guys.
So the last sentence is the board agreed to move forward and request planning board council to draft language to reflect the intent of the board.
What?
I don't think we need planning board councils, which is that, applicable to. What are we asking planning board council?
Regarding the water hookup.
Oh, in the last comment, okay. Not the whole pile?
No, regarding the water hookup. I'm sorry. It was, it was to the paragraph before. It was applicable to the paragraph before. Yeah. I'm sorry, not to the entire, all the bullets. No, just to the water hookup for town council to create language.
But we're basically looking for, I think it's for some standards for the Public Works Director to use when granting relief from the mandatory requirement that you hook up if you're within, where's a certain number of feet?
No, that's not, that's not what he's looking for. He's looking for more vague language. It's, it's not within a certain amount of feet. It's, so the, the issue we had was when the hemlock drive subdivision came, right? And they were required, but because there was not enough water pressure and the state had submitted a letter saying that there was not enough water pressure, the town, the town couldn't hook them up.
Why do we need new language to make? That's just a business decision. The state says there isn't enough pressure. There isn't enough pressure.
Because our ordinance requires them to hook up. So Steve Randall wanted it removed.
So this is why Steve is looking for something that's a little less structured?
Right, exactly. He wanted it, like, maybe to say at the discretion of...
I got it. Yep.
I'm not in favor of being at the, I think unless the town is unable to provide either water or sewer, and that should be, I think, not the discretion.
So that would be the draft language, then, that they're looking for?
Yeah, right. Because in that particular case, the town was unable to provide water.
And it will be for several lots.
Or sewer.
So it's not at all...
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah. Now, I, I think Roger tried to make the language as simple as possible, and that's exactly what you want, right? If the town's unable to do it, we can't do it. Don't need a lawyer for that.
So I ask my question again. Does it, does it really need to go to the town council? Do we really need to pay them to do it?
No.
Or can we just do it? Roger?
I think we can do it. I don't think it needs to go to...
You're not going to do it, too.
We have a downtown planner. We can...
Yeah, I mean, it's no problem. I think one thing you might want to look at is this is usually in the water and sewer commissioner's purview as to requiring or not requiring connections. So we want to make sure it's there also, because if we extend the line, the Board of Selectmen, or the select board have the power as public utilities to require this. Usually sewer, it's required in the state. Water is not. So I think that's at the state level. We've done, done projects in other part of the state where they have to connect the sewer because of the betterment issues paying for the sewer.
Right.
So you, you need to be careful of, obviously, if they can't, if they don't have the water pressure, it, you know, it's a moot point. So, but yeah, we can make the language work.
Yeah, some language about capacity available for both, yeah.
Making sure it's adequate.
Right, right. I mean, sewer's never going to be a problem if it's, if it's a, there's no real pressure issue unless you're pumping station and everything else, you know?
Mr. Chairman, road construction regulations, I'm sorry I wasn't here for this. What, what's in the mind for that?
Is that that whole book that was like a year old at this point?
Yeah, Steve wanted to make some revisions.
Right. So, so last year, Steve, no, I'm sorry. Last year, Tavis started working on some revisions to the road construction standards, regulations. And Steve also, Steve Randall, Director of Public Works, also wanted to make some changes. They were not working on a tandem track. And so that was put on hold, and we were going to start the changes earlier this year, and we decided to wait until we, our new planning director arrived.
So the good news is Steve Randall is involved, but he's on hold. Fine. I'm fine.
Yes. In fact, he has emailed me. He has already begun working on them, made the revisions. We are actually putting aside the ones that were prepared by Tavis, and we are starting with, we are going to start with what Steve would like to move forward with and propose to the board.
He talked about road widths and the...
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
So he's got his draft.
Entrance width.
So he's been a party to these, and well, good.
He hasn't even been a party yet. He has created them, created the revisions. He has sent the draft over to the planning office.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Bill just started this week, and...
Second, second day.
Second day. So, so let me just back up for a moment. The reason why I sent the, the list was just to refresh your memory because it's been off the books for a couple of months, awaiting Bill's arrival. It is now here again, and now that he's here, it will be expanded.
Thank you. Actually, to Leanne's point, one of the things I'd like to do is take a look at some really, really older subdivisions that haven't proceeded because they can kind of sneak up on you as the market ticks up, you know, people going back into those developments that are half-done and looking at 1960s plans and using those standards. So do an inventory of that and help the board understand what they want to do to move forward on some of those older plans. We have a few that people are approaching us and saying, what's happening with this, I don't know, forest? I mean, there's no road. There's nothing there. It's been around since the 70s. So we should take a look at those. And on the road construction regulations, I can work with Steve. What I've done in the past is just on benchmarking, gone to multiple communities, looked at their subdivision and their construction. You know, they'll have good drawings. It's all public domain, you know, and see what looks good rather than reinventing the wheel.
That makes sense.
So I'd, I'd like to put at the top of the list some kind of resolution of shorefront residential district backlog and resolution of what are...
We've already, we've had that.
Oh, good.
In two days, he's been here. So that's...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we've already, we're already addressing that. In addition, one of the other things that I would like to put on the list, so this list will be revised and probably put back in front of you in two weeks, is to amend Section 175, 186(c), which is that permits are valid for a period of one year from the date of issuance. We have a lot of conflict amongst all the permits. You recently just put into, into effect a short-term rental permit that is good for two years, but according to this piece of the ordinance, it's only, a permit's only good for one year. That's just one example. So we have other places, you know, special use permit is only good for one year. But a lot of times, construction for a home takes more than a year if there's complications.
Most.
Most. So I think that's important to look at that piece.
I'd like to clarify, so the notion of permits for a year, if I understood things, you get a permit, if you take no action within that year, the permit lapses, it's done. If you have a, if you have a special permit for, or if you have a permit for a, a project, but you're making progress, you haven't stopped building, you know, the shovel's in the ground and things are happening, that permit is still good and valid because you're in the process of getting it done, as long as it, as long as you're not folding up the project and leaving it abandoned. If you're issuing a permit for somebody to conduct a business activity, and that permit has a two-year re-upcycle, to me, unless I misunderstand what we're, you know, to me, that's, that's, it's a, you got a two-year gig, and then you got to come back and re-permit. But I don't think it flies in the face of one year. I don't think it, I find those not to be the same.
I believe the legislature just changed the vesting time to three and six years from two and five. I think that's what the ad information said.
Yeah, and then define vesting. Typically, it's 75%.
Yeah, so...
Not just a shovel in the ground.
So we'll want more clarity on it. But again, my, my whole, my whole memory on this is you pull a permit, you start, you start doing things, you're showing progress. Sometimes you can't get materials. Sometimes you can't, I mean, there are people who can't get siding for their house or whatever. That doesn't mean that the permit expires and you have to reapply. That makes no sense to me. So we probably want to just take these little bite-sized pieces and say, is that a one-year kind of a situation? Or if I give you a license to operate a business, a permit for two years, that's different than a permit to build a structure.
Perhaps we look at the list and see what the...
Yep.
That's, that's why it's on this list.
Yeah, I give you an operating license.
One of the things we need to put on there is that we should require that permits be posted within five or 10 days of issuance because now there's a mandatory 30-day appeal period. So you can just sit on your permit for 30 days, and then you're home free, and nobody can appeal.
There is one kind of solution, if I may, is you post them online, and people can peruse that. I mean, you still post them on the site, and that's required, but also put them there so people can keep, they, they've seen something go through the ZBA, they tracked it, and then the permit shows up online. So if a butter was concerned about it, they can see when that happened. So we're, we've been talking about posting applications and everything that goes out to you, the zoning board, online so that the public can see everything that you see. And it, it means also that you, as board members, if you don't have your printed packet, you know, you can go to the same place the public does. So, you know, we can require, you're right, they should have that card up there, that building permit, and not in the front window, you know, 100 feet from the street. It should be somewhere.
Visible.
Yeah, visible.
But you can say on it 30 days. You had to, you know, put it on the tree.
Yeah, that's what people...
The wind glows and it's calling.
Yeah.
We had an applicant tonight get an approval, 30-day window for appeal. I think if I heard your comment, you'd want that, that approval and that 30-day window to be noticed someplace where someone could look and say, I think I might want to have a question or two about that. Is that, was that, was that where you were going?
I was looking at, well, I'll take 71 Street, the prime example of this where the guy got a permit, sat on it for 30 days, and then put up his single-family dwelling.
And what was wrong with that?
Well, I was in bad faith, but it certainly, there's nothing illegal about it, and I think it means you cannot appeal his decision, his, his permit.
So what you're talking about is that...
So what you're talking about is that the application never had to go to the board, it was a straight-up building.
Right, yeah, I'm talking about...
So there's no abutters, there's nobody that's aware of it.
Yeah.
And then if you sort of couch the card, as it were, then they'll never know until the construction...
They'll still never know if they posted online, they'll never know.
Oh, so now I think I understand, so you're, I was, I misunderstood you, Roger. So I was of the understanding that, you know, the deliberations of these boards, the zoning and the, yours is, if I went in and filed an application to put a deck on the back of my house, and I got a legitimate permit, somehow, somewhere, there should be a noticing to the public, in your view, that somebody could step forward and say, I have a problem with that. Is that, is that what yours is?
So there's a 30-day appeal period on building permits, and so if they don't post it...
Yeah, it's now mandatory, although the abutters, I think, lost the appeal on 71 North Main, because at one point, it was a reasonable amount of time. But right now, you can get a permit to put in a single-family dwelling, which your neighbors may think has problems, and you just sit on the permit for 30 days, and they can't appeal the decision.
So that's the higher end issue. The lower end issue is you'd apply that to a deck on the back of my house.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's just, one's a house and one's a deck. But you'd want all of those to somehow be available for the public to inspect, and then have an opportunity to comment with a comment.
I just want your neighbors to know you're putting a deck on, because you got a permit in your yard.
Sure.
And...
Well, that's different. You could then say, we just have to notify your abutters, but you'd want to notify the public.
No, I just want you to put up, post your permit, because once, you have to post it at some point, and I want you to have to post it within five, 10 days of receipt of the permit, so if someone has a problem with it, they can appeal the decision. The only people who can appeal a building permit like that is basically an abutter.
An abutter.
And it's not something the community can appeal.
Yeah. There is that word staff also, because I do have building permits that come to me that need laminating from this town and other towns sometimes, that are way past when the building has started, because they're still waiting for the permit piece of paper to arrive. So five days sometimes isn't enough.
Well, they shouldn't be starting work until they get the building card, the little notice, well...
Till you get the building card.
Maybe in the past.
And as staff gets backed up, some things get let go.
Yeah, I think Mr. Maria has a point as it relates to visibility. Most of these cards end up in the front window behind the curtains, you know? The building official can see it when they come up on it, but not anybody from the street. And at other places, I've seen them posted to trees, mailboxes, things like that, so as you walk or drive by, you can see the card, and sometimes the card are day-glow green, you know? So, I mean, that's a good point.
Is there anything happening with the historical review program?
The demolition?
Demolition? That's coming before us in September at the work session.
Should that be on...
It's scheduled.
Should we put that on this list?
No, because they have to be...
Well, it's already scheduled. It's not our work program. It's being presented by the Heritage Commission. So it's not worked by this board, that's why it's not on our work program. They're presenting it to the board.
I see.
Yeah, but they are coming the second meeting, which is the 16th, I believe, of September.
Okay, great. All right, any more on the work program?
Sorry for the confusion.
Is there any one from the public that would like to speak?
Hi, is this still on? Hi, I'm Randy Tatro. I just wanted to clarify, because when Shana left, I didn't quite hear how it ended. How did it end? Did, yeah, so are you guys gonna change anything, or are we leaving it alone, or how's it gonna work, the shoreline rules?
It sounded like we're gonna get a new, oh, sorry.
Yeah, Shana was gonna hand it off.
Yeah, a new draft, but it is exactly as it's written until we change it.
Okay, so...
It's voted on, we have to, you know, send it back through the whole thing, it's changed.
Right, so proceeding forward, it's the original rules we got, and original application we got, only because I'm working with people, I like to know. The, this most important one that was discussed, that Vaughn had a conversation with her, is the lottery development, and everybody's getting hung up on the 20%, because normally, if you're over 20%, you don't get the waiver to the grids or the unaltered. But it's not all about the 20%, even though it says it at the beginning, it's also about the more nearly conforming part that you guys discussed, which is, are you staying the same or doing less than the non-conformity that exists on the lot? And that's usually quantified by the plan. It can have an associated letter, but I'm here to tell you that hasn't happened a lot, you know, in the application process. Usually look at the plan, seeing if it's less than what was existing, and that's how that threshold has been met. That's come up recently on a few. She quoted one where, you know, you got 34%, they're going down to 33.5%, you know, but they're going down. So, you know, is that something you want to change or something you don't want to change? I understand both sides of that, but that's the way it's been treated, as we talked about back in April when I brought in the examples. The other thing that I'm not sure she, I don't think she brought up tonight, but I did have a conversation about, similar to what Roger was just saying about timing on permits, Shana's opinion that legally, town council, that all the other permits, other than the ones that are state mandated, have a year shelf life. Well, before that, the shoreline permits in Wolfboro were, you know, ran with the property, and I realize that's probably too far. The state renewal is five years, but she agreed with me that one year is probably not enough for some of these people to get mobilized and either start work, and is just starting work gonna be enough? You know, there'll be that threshold we'll have to talk about, but if they could be either a three-year or some kind of easier renewal process after that year for the shoreline permits, you know, some of them are pretty comprehensive, I think that's something that is gonna need to be dealt with as soon as it can, because all the permits that are being issued now are for a year. So, two things with that. Either that's gonna be too short, or someone's gonna come in and say, well, I started, I cleared the lot, or did I do enough? You know what I mean?
So could there be a mechanism that it's approved for a year and maybe re-approved if you come before the board?
To get an appeal?
To...
The board or whomever, however you guys set it up.
To update.
Yeah, I mean, building permits are like that, right? They're a year, and then they're automatically renewed, you can come in and renew them.
I think they're six months.
Yeah.
And if I may, the key to it is you have to start the activity, you don't have to have the occupancy permit in six months, you just have to start the activity on a building permit in six months. Nobody could get the arc permit on larger projects in six, so the issue is, in the year, do you have to have it finished, or do you have to start it with a continuation of the activity?
That's gonna end up being the question. It's gonna be the question with these one-year ones, I think.
And it was mentioned earlier, I think the difficulty is that with the fluctuation in the economy and materials and logistics, if somebody's building something that has any steel, you know, you may have some issues, so maybe there's a staff function that, you know, they apply for a six-month extension, providing that the conditions of the site have not changed substantially, because construction is just not proceeding at the same rate it used to these days, you know? Getting the resources together to move it forward, you know, are difficult.
Yeah, there's one that I'm still doing plans for down on Springfield Point, and that started the beginning of COVID. They're still decorating.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, typically, ZBA, you have to engage the use, but planning, you have to start the activity. That's most of the time.
Are there any other examples from other towns that you're aware of, Randy, that might apply?
Like?
If there's another local community that has that mechanism.
You're one of the, one of the only ones I deal with. Some of the other towns have their own shoreline permit processes, but they're kind of in conjunction with the building permit. And I know Oz is, it's a supplement to the building permit.
The time goes.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, the state's five. They pick that for a reason. Septics with the state are four, then you gotta renew them. And it has to do with what rules are gonna be changed in between, maybe? So, you know...
Yeah, we have that with the building code.
Yeah, like you were just talking about, you're vested with that. So, you know, I would say, if it was up to me, it'd be like three years, maybe? That way, if they wait longer than that, and you guys change some certain things with the shoreline, then they'd have to, they'd have to change that, they'd have to re-apply. That seems somewhat fair. That's why the state does it, because, that's why they went five years, because I don't think they think they're gonna change, you know, within a five-year period, change significantly, you know, their requirements. They might change their fees, but not their requirements. So I think generally, Shana did a good job trying to understand the differences there. I think the, there is, the application right now doesn't have to be changed as far as the redevelopment part, because if you read the application, it'll say, what do you have as far as unaltered? What do you have for unaltered? What are you required to put for an unaltered on a small lot? What are you required to put on a large lot? And then it says, place the smaller of the two on the next line, and that's the reason it's doing that. You know, because you're either going, you're making it more nearly conforming, so you're allowed to stay with that. And, you know, and even, well, for instance, even on a large lot, you can count the post-development impervious, so whatever you're proposing for post-development impervious between the 50 and 150, you can count that, you can subtract that, you know, before you do your unaltered calculation. And I guess the reason they do that is because they figure a large lot's bigger and you've got more room. Something else that got brought up recently, when I was dealing with Shana, is on these pre-existing lots, where the camps are in the 50, and some of the developments in the 50, the grids obviously don't meet the 25% point score, nor would they be realistically supplemented with vegetation in front of, you know, the beach and in front of their camps. But there is, in Wolfboro's regs, there is a section that says that you can discount the area that is being used in those grids, you know, by your, by your pre-existing condition, and then change the percentage of your grid from 25 points to, let's say, 15, because part of that grid's already being used up. You see the difference in that? And I don't think, myself included, a lot of people have been using that feature with the shoreline permits. You know, because usually, most of the time, you pull them back a little bit, or, you know, most of the time, they get pulled back, and that's one of the functions of being nearly more conforming, because you're pulling it back. And even in the state's eyes, the state will let you trade a lot more with non-conforming areas in the 50, like Roger was talking about earlier. The state doesn't care about the zoning part of that. They'll, if they think you're doing something better, they'll allow you to do something more in the 50. With us, with the municipality, it's a hard setback, and it's non-conforming rules. So, you know, so people go through the state, and then they think they're okay, and then they look at the town part, and all of a sudden, they got a non-conforming structure issue or something like that, you know what I mean? And so what most of the consultants are doing are trying to see if it meets a local rule first, because usually if it does...
It's stricter, right?
The state one, that's kind of backwards from the way it first started, like with Rob, he wanted to see the state permit first before he'd look at the town. You know, he wanted to make sure you could get the state one, so, but we found out along the way, that wasn't the best, you know, necessarily the best way to do it, because you could get bit that way, and then you had to go back to the state. So I think, I think there's a few things that can be tweaked in the stuff, you know, that people read better. I think she's a little hung up on the 20% with the redevelopment. It's not tied to, it can't be tied to the 20%, because most of them are already over.
Right.
It's just that they gotta be less, you know? If you got a virgin lot, which we've had a few, but they're rare, then they have to meet that. You know, they have to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that's kind of how we left it, that's why I stayed, it was entertaining, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It is.
Oh, excuse me.